Call the meeting in order. Roll call, please.
McKnight?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Roja?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Kinder?
I'd like to lead you to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as we're all.
It's not a non-internalized for Congress.
And notice of executive session meeting, May 3rd.
Yep, an executive session was held May 3rd, 2023, to discuss personnel and real estate. And another executive session was held May 10th, 2023, to discuss personnel.
And May 17th at 5:30 PM for attorney-client privilege communications.
Two little minutes.
So moved.
A second.
Roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
And motion to, oh, we just did that, communications?
None.
None?
We got fifty-something emails about the circus at the moment. Just quit bringing them up before that happens. One was from Carol Baskin, which was pretty cool.
Managers report.
So there's three items. We have today reached our 50th right-to-know request. Once a month, I'll be able to provide counsel with a fiscal output of how much that's cost in staff and legal time. Also, just to mention that Tuesday, May 9th, Secretary of Legislative Affairs, Michael Bearb, was here for a meet-and-greet with counsel. Just Tim Walker was also here. Got to hear what the state's planning on doing with some fiscal things. So that was very nice of him to attend. Also, the EMS report, so far through May 16th, we've transported 76 patients. Eighty-five total EMS calls were dispatched. In between fire and EMS, 113 calls have been answered since April 5th, when we started. So year-to-date, transported a total of 201 patients.
Counsel subcommittee reports? Housing development?
That's me.
I don't have anything. I haven't spoken with Joe. Community engagement?
No update since last time. We can talk at the subcommittee meeting. But we're working, Gretchen and I, I think I might have mentioned this last time, but Gretchen and I are working on a schedule of all permitted events in the city in a kind of just standard way that counsel, staff, and everybody can show up and engage folks, whether it be around the housing plan or budget. So Gretchen, we should, we'll talk about that at this month's subcommittee meeting?
Yeah, that would be good.
To come up with a plan.
That will, that depends on.
After that.
Finances, Jim?
Well, I was just gonna say, I also, well, it's kind of related to just community engagement. I met with, I went to the beautification committee meeting, and they are really an awesome committee. I have to say, they're doing a lot. I'm hoping you guys can, at the end of the meeting, we can talk about the flag choices, because they're wanting us to give them a thumbs up.
I thought they just took our vote on the table.
No, they want, they did okay the four.
Oh, I thought they were just going with the four.
No.
If I could do that right now, it wasn't clear. Can we do that right now? See this I have, you guys could even.
This look really nice.
If you wanted to find, there's the four flags.
Four flags.
The, gosh, I think she goes through with it.
They took out all the contentious ones.
It did. The, what else is on there? I'm gonna get all nervous now. The tree called the man who's to ship this out.
Market House.
And the Market House. Yeah.
I think it's all true.
We got your approval.
Those are really nice.
Okay, so it's official now. They're also, it's great, they worked, kind of found a, someone who does like urban lighting, for free as a volunteer. He's associated with Allegheny, and they did, we're starting to talk about ideas for the park. They also are gonna rename, instead of Light Up Night, it's gonna be Mary Meadville, which is kind of a cool thing. So they, they actually, they're doing a lot. They are working on planting a tree at Lincoln Park, possibly with the city's approval. I was just really, they're a busy group, and they meet for an hour and a half and really pound out details.
Gretchen, do you have anything on finance?
I don't, just that, you know, we have some cool, hopefully, involvements at the state level, you know, that we're hopeful.
Yeah, when Mike Bearb was here, I had talked, each of us talked to him on different stuff. One of the things I talked to him about was some taxing options, modifying them to meet the needs that have been eaten away through inflation. And he gave us some good background. Subsequently, sent an email to our representative, Brad Roy. And last night, serendipitously, I happened to see Park Wentworth, an unnamed political headquarters, and we talked about local taxing options. Specifically, LST. That would be my, end of my report.
Did you hear back from Brad?
No, Brad was there last night too, and I asked him if he had responded. He said he does not have a response for us, because we had requested one in writing on various issues.
We should reach out to Michelle Brooks' office as well.
Old business?
So this is the immobilization of vehicles ordinance. Rena, do you want to?
An ordinance of the City of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, should permit the immobilization of vehicles located on public property as penalty for unsettled parking violations, defining certain terms used herein, providing for authorization fees, booting process, notification of booting process, time limitations, complete process and penalties, providing for an effective date severability and repealer.
Motion?
So.
Second?
Oh, second.
Discussion?
So this was up for discussion at council's May 10th study session. This is backed before council for consideration with first and second reading on the table. I will note that the fee in the ordinance before you was adjusted from 250 to 150, but you can certainly have further discussion if fee is a concern on that. I will note that I did learn today that Allegheny actually charges $50 for their boot. So if that has any kind of impact on decision-making, just for your knowledge.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, I just, I, right, council might remember that this was brought to us not exclusively because of Allegheny College students, but with, it was brought up, right, that Allegheny College students present a particular problem in this instance is that their cars are registered with a parent or somebody out of state, and it's hard to go after them for unpaid tickets. I met today with the dean of students, and they're willing to work with us, so they're willing to call parents for us if our public works, or sorry, if our parking enforcement officers or police officers call their public safety and just let them know that there's a violation or a stack of tickets or something, license plate number or Allegheny sticker number, and they'll call mom and dad or whomever. Talked about the possibility of maybe putting a courtesy box up there. They're willing to drive students to the station to pay their tickets or to show up for court. I feel like there's possibilities to explore here if, if, if part of the issue, if a big part of the issue is Allegheny students. I think there's some partnerships to explore to address this that would give us time to look at the issue of parking more holistically. I think the fact that we issue a warrant for someone's arrest with unpaid parking tickets is not, it seems like there's reason to believe that that's not typical, and that there are other communities in the state that do it differently. And I would like some time to look into that.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea. I hate to see someone get a record or something, or just even the court cause of a warrant first instead of trying to find some solution to help everyone.
Okay, but let's clarify, they are not issuing a warrant for arrest for unpaid tickets. They're issuing a warrant for arrest for an unpaid citation, which was generated as a result of an unpaid ticket. So there's already an intermediate step in there. And this is not aimed at Allegheny College. We have people downtown that have multiple tickets on their cars. So it's not just at Allegheny College. And I think we need the possibility of adverse consequences on the books to stimulate and encourage good behavior.
I was also, well, I know that Mike had said, and then Marianne also, that the police talk with campus security. So that, I feel like the dean isn't aware that there's already a relationship with campus security.
But he pointed out that there.
Okay, she, okay, thanks, because I was like, when you said that, I was like, well, they've already tried, and then campus is like, we can't do anything. So I feel like that's kind of, I feel like that's a good, I feel like that would be a good kind of policy thing to follow through with Allegheny kids, like have a thing, a protocol, like a step. That warrant thing, that's kind of separate from the booting, right? Because that's a different.
The way that the warrant, I'm just looking at it right now, the way that the warrant looks in here is that if you've gone to a magisterial district justice and have been found to be in violation, and then you don't pay the tickets in response to the summons that is issued thereafter, then they can issue a warrant.
Then they can issue a warrant. And then, and, but the way that the ordinance, and I guess the way I'm, the reason I'm asking for time is because the ordinance that's in front of us puts the boot on after the warrant, right? Boot is the last thing. And it seems like maybe in Erie, like there's other ways of doing it where the boot happens before, there's like a warrant for your. I just feel like, are we, are we, is the sequence that we have set up right now the best one for people? And I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out.
I don't, I don't know if that's, that's accurate. It's been a while since I looked at this. We put this together in 2022, so I did just update the dates from '22 onto '23 on the draft that's in front of you. But it says, "Any outstanding violations of the City of Meadville traffic code or Pennsylvania motor vehicle code for which citations have been filed with the district justice, magistrate or district judge, and a summons has been issued to which either no response or has been made, or for which a warrant has been issued." Meaning that if you have failed to attend the court and including adjudicated citations for the fines and costs imposed are unpaid, it is one of the items that falls under the definitions of unpaid parking violations. Then we have under the boot installation that a motor vehicle parked in the city upon a public street or public parking lot at any time may, under the direction of officer or member of the police department, be booted if there is one or more unsettled parking violations pending against the owner. So it's not required that there be a warrant issued first. It's just that if we've issued tickets, a summons has been issued, and either no response has been made, or the district justice has issued a warrant. So I just wanted to make that clarification. It's, it's, there's an or.
So, okay, so that's helpful. So, so there is an opportunity, if we passed this, to still reconsider the order of operations that, that happens? Like essentially the kind of escalation of, because I, I think that you're right, Jim. Like I do think that, like, right, there, there needs to be penalties, and I think that there are penalties, but are they sequenced in the right way?
So I would say that this, this is issued here as a last resort in terms of they've gone to the district justice, and the district justice, you're either failing to respond, or the district justice is issuing a warrant because you failed to respond, then you can hit the, the boot. So just mere non-payment of tickets without taking them to the district justice is not sufficient to get a boot.
Say that, sorry, say the last word again.
Simply not paying your ticket is not going to get you a boot. The city has to take, the way this is written, the city has to take the affirmative step of going to the district justice and filing charges. And then you either don't respond to the charges, or the judge issues a warrant because you don't respond to the charges. That then gives us an opportunity to go for the boot. If you go to the hearing, and you have the hearing, and you participate and the like, then no boot is going to be forthcoming. But it's when you're ignoring.
Yeah. I get, I recognize that I'm making maybe a mountain out of this molehill, but like I, a resident came up to me at the farmer's market and explained that they were arrested and like held in jail for two days or something. Like, like, there was a warrant for their arrest. They, it, it happened at work, right, which is pretty damning for a, like, that's, that's tough. And, and they were held, and like, I'm just, like, for parking tickets. If the car, like, let's boot the car, okay? But I don't know, I guess I'm just, that's, that's why I'm like, is there a better way to do this?
So you're thinking, I just want to figure out a better way.
Yeah, now I'm like, let's boot the car first. Which is different than how this, or, which is why I guess I'm asking for time, right? Like, I, I feel like the ordinance that's being put in front of us is part of a series of steps that is not working for people.
Would it be helpful? Because, so the definition, once again, the def, just kind of, if you can track how my mind's working on this. The definition of unsettled parking violations is any, any outstanding violations of the Meadville traffic code or Pennsylvania motor vehicle code for which citations have been filed with the magisterial district judge, and a summons has been issued to which either no response has been made, or a warrant has been issued. It includes all adjudicated citations for the fines and costs imposed are unpaid. So a warrant is only going to be issued if there's no response to the magisterial district justice having a hearing. That's the only time that a warrant's going, ultimately going to be issued. So we can remove the provision that says or for which a warrant has been issued, and just remove any reference to a warrant in here whatsoever, because quite frankly, it is not for the city to determine whether a warrant is going to be issued. It's for the judge.
I guess I'm just trying, can we intervene before it goes before a judge?
Are you asking before it goes to, is submitted for citation, that they have the boot? Is that, I mean, because that's.
Yeah, I think so.
Right, I think that's.
Okay, maybe I'm missing that. Then yes, I mean, I, I would think that you, you could boot earlier.
Before it goes to court.
Yeah, my, I guess what's, my concern is, okay, they've gotten a ticket, they've ignored it. They've gotten a letter from the police department, they've ignored it. They've gotten, you know, and there's time, there's days in between all this, and they're ignoring it. You put the boot on, I mean.
You can't ignore that.
But you know what, someone may not drive, they'll ride or they'll leave it. You know, I, I think, and what Jim is saying, I think what we need to do, we need to set a precedent is that, look, this is the way it is, you know. They're working with you already, you got time, you know, from the time the ticket's issued, to summons, to magistrate, there is a time period for them to take care of that, if that, if that's what they want to do, you know, realistically. I mean, I know me, if, if it was me, and knowing that, what the repercussion would be, I would take care of it. So I, I feel that the way it's, it is now, that if we change it or amend, well, some, somebody else comes along and they get upset or don't like it this way, because, you know.
Because the boot's there, I can't go to work, I can't do this. You know, if I'd have known from the magistrate, they, they might have the opposite logic, right? They might be like, if I'd only known, you know, if someone had told me that this is really serious, like, it's in the magistrate, I have to appear in court, and now my, you know, there's that other, I don't know, it does seem like that could be a possibility. Like, I'm really angry now that there's a boot on my car. I, you know, like, either way, it's not a pleasant.
Tim, if we amended clause C, starting with, and a summons has been issued, if you strike through to which either no response has been made, or for which a warrant has been issued, and then continue with, and including adjudicated citations.
Well, I would not recommend that part, because the summons has been issued, meaning that the court has summoned you to a hearing. I wouldn't want to boot before the hearing, in case you have a reasonable defense. So it's written now so that we could summon if you're ignoring the hearing. If you, if, excuse me, we could boot if you're ignoring the hearing. So if you wanted to remove anything, I would suggest there'd be the removal of the reference to the warrant, because ultimately, that's the judge making that decision. We want to figure out at what point is there going to be a trigger for a boot. My recommendation would be that the trigger for the boot be if you've gone through all the steps, you have the court hearing, and the person has just failed to appear or failed to respond in the manner in which they're ordered, and then the judge issues a summons as a result thereof, then you can issue the boot. You've given them every opportunity, they've ignored everybody and the judge, then you boot them. But, but really, the reference to the warrant, while it's, you know, standard language in these types of ordinances, ultimately, it's not helpful, I mean, it's not necessary.
So what change are you recommending? Just the words, or for which a warrant has been.
I, I would have it say, and a summons has been issued to which, scratch either, no response has been made.
Okay.
And then get rid of, or for which a warrant has been issued, and then leaving, and including adjudicated citations where fines and costs imposed are unpaid. So that's the part that says, if the court says thou shall pay within 30 days, and you're refusing to pay, then we have the opportunity to go out and boot them.
I would move to amend the ordinance accordingly.
A second.
Why, why is this, why is this a priority right now? Like, why is this coming up in front of us? Is there something that is making this time-sensitive?
I mean, as Tim referred to, we've had it, kind of drafted for a little bit.
We just saw it in the last month, like, why?
Lindy's just getting frustrated with the parking at the Market House and things like that, and just not being able to do anything, and Lindy's words, like they're thumbing their nose at the city. And she tries very hard to work with folks. She calls them, she sends letters. She's very, if people will call her and try to work something out, she will do that. So I think she's just getting very frustrated, and it's getting to a point where she doesn't know what else to do.
Gretchen, you have anything?
I just have an anecdote about a friend who had that, you know, she was pregnant, and she had like, she had the thing, she had, and she, and she did, she appealed, and she was able, there was a warrant and everything. She was like, I can't deal with this, and she, and the judge was like, oh, I understand. So I mean, I can, that, the logic of going to the magistrate actually does make sense first, yeah.
Jim?
Would it be any different if we just towed and forgot the boot? People be any happier? In Morgantown, West Virginia, you make more money owning a tow truck than you do as a neurosurgeon. I'm not kidding.
I bet Morgantown, I'd be towed. So we have a motion, second?
Gretchen, second.
For the amending, yeah.
For the amending, correct?
Yeah.
Moving first and second as amended.
Okay.
Roll call?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
No.
Move on, second reading.
Motion?
So moved.
Second, sorry.
Roll call?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
No.
Okay, next is resolution, authorize signatures, service agreement with Meadville Medical Center and the City of Meadville.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on a service agreement for police services between the City of Meadville and Meadville Medical Center.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
This was also tabled at council's May 3rd meeting, appeared again at May 10th study session. No changes have been made since, well, just some clarification changes have been made about within city limits and which MMC facility is, but other than that, everything else is substantially the same.
Well, for clarification, I am a corporate member of MMC. That is not the Board of Trustees, that is just the general public board. So I would have no input as a corporate law.
And so under the Pennsylvania Ethics Act, that would not present you with a conflict of interest.
Correct.
And again, this agreement means our officers walk through on their rounds, not necessarily bound to any regularity, $85,000 a year from the medical center we receive for that.
And the medical center's fiscal year starts July 1st, so this would be effective July 1st.
Roll call?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
New business, ordinance first and second reading of water connection?
An ordinance of the City of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, amending Article 915 of the Meadville Municipal Code by repealing provisions relating to rate schedules, rules, and regulations, use of hydrant water, use of city water without prior approval, and penalties, amending the title of Article 915 and adding provisions to require connection of certain buildings within the city to the city water system, and for penalties for failure to connect, providing for an effective date severability and repealer.
Motion?
I would say move.
Second.
Discussion?
This came before council for discussion at their May 10th study session. Again, this is due to, just some inquiries the city has received about folks within the city limits drilling wells. We'd like to avoid that. This is effectively a mandatory tap-in, unless receiving prior approval from city officials. And also repealing some outdated language that's no longer applicable effective upon the sale of the, the water system to the water authority.
Gretchen?
Okay.
Jim? Fine. Roll call?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
A resolution appointing Mary Ann Manano.
Second reading.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
All right, now, resolution appointing Mary Ann Manano, entry and city clerk.
The optional third-class city charter code requires that a city clerk be appointed by city council in order to conduct the business appropriately. The position's currently open. It's recommended that Ms. Manano be appointed as interim city clerk until you have a longer-term solution.
Motion?
Should we read the resolution?
Or you just?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville, appointing city manager Mary Ann Manano as interim city clerk for the City of Meadville effective May 18th, 2022, or 2023, sorry.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Possible to have that be effective today?
Yes.
If we could amend that and have an effective date of May 17?
I would say move.
Second.
Roll call?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution authorized signatures management agreement between the City of Meadville and Meadville Area Sewer Authority?
Resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on a management agreement between the City of Meadville and Meadville Area Sewer Authority.
Motion?
Motion? I'll second.
Discussion?
This is an agreement that is necessary in order to facilitate the PennVest closing at the sewer authority. If, uh, council remembers, uh, council previously approved guaranteeing the, um, uh, debt, the PennVest debt that the sewer authority was entering into. Um, this is the operating and management agreement that has currently been in place, has been historically in place since twenty seventeen with, um, uh, the sewer authority. The only change is the extension of the termination date to coincide with the termination of the guarantee of the, um, loan.
Motion?
Motion? I think we have-
Oh, we have.
Did we, um, uh, the Massa signed this, right?
They will, they're planning, they will, they plan on holding a special meeting.
Okay.
Questions, Jim?
No.
Roll call?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roma?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Resolution authorized signatures in line of credit to the Meadville and Meadville Area Sewer Authority?
Resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on a line of credit note with the Meadville Area Sewer Authority.
Motion?
I would say move.
Second.
This is an internal financing between the City of Meadville and the Meadville Area Sewer Authority. Um, one of the items that, uh, particularity of the PennVest investment is that PennVest will, uh, have a five percent holdback uh, on the loan amount until such time that certain permits are issued by the Department of Environmental Protection signifying that the project is completed. Massa still has to pay out those monies to the contractor. And given some of the delays that we have been seeing, um, coming out of the permitting process, that it is required by PennVest to have a line of credit in place in order to cover those costs. Um, this is a much cheaper option for the rate payers and citizens of Meadville, for the city to offer this financing as opposed to going out for traditional bank financing. Um, and it's essentially just a debt of about one point five mil- up to one point five million that the city would carry for a limited period of time until the, um, uh, permit is issued. And it is such that when, uh, PennVest issues their do- their money, as a result, that holdback no longer being necessary, that will all come in and this debt will be paid off. So there's a, there's a guaranteed takeout in the, in the debt.
If I understand it correctly, we are lending them money about one percent cheaper than they could get it through a traditional lender. And our rate of return will be roughly equivalent to what we are currently earning on our investments.
Or it will be, as it's a variable rate.
Right.
What is the rate?
Two percent less than prime, correct.
Where, where is this money coming from for?
Long-term capital fund. These are monies that, uh, are only applicable for interest earnings only and are not used for any operations. Gretchen, you have anything?
Well, I guess I was just trying to think about like, paint me a picture to, like, what would, it would be, like, why would they pull on the account, like, I just, you know, just like an example.
So if you, if you're, um, putting a hundred thousand dollar addition on your home and you go to the bank, the bank's going to offer you a hundred thousand dollars, but they're only going to give you ninety-five thousand dollars until you get your necessary permits on the back end. And say it takes an hour, a year in order to get those permits. Your contractor's not going to wait for payment. So you still have to come up with that extra five thousand dollars. This line of credit is going to provide that money-
That, that really helps.
To, to Massa, to pay the contractors so that that end of the project can be completed. And once they receive their permit from DEP, PennVest will release the rest of the money and it'll come directly to us to pay it off.
Great, that really helps.
Well.
Was this in our pocket, like, before?
When did we send, when did you send out the line of credit, Monday?
Yeah, I think it was, yeah, it was, um, Thursday, we had a conference call with PennVest and found out that the bank was not going to be able to do it because they wanted first position and it wasn't going to work with PennVest. So Tim drafted it Monday, Monday, or Friday night, and so we got it Monday and looked it over, sent it to Massa to have them look at it, and then it got to you guys, so.
Part of the rush is that even though the PennVest closing isn't, um, due to happen until June-
Last week of June.
Whatever, um, their rules are such that all finalized documents have to be uploaded by May twenty-sixth. And so this is the last opportunity for us to approve that, have the, be the last piece of, of our participation in the closing.
When you say this is a better deal for the rate payers, it's because we're offering it to them at a lower, at a, at a lower rate. We can do it now.
But still cover whatever we could absolutely get ourselves.
Yeah.
So we're not losing any money on this.
Right, it's no worse of a deal for the city than we would otherwise have been receiving, but it's a better deal for the rate payer in the long run.
Now, Massa's certainly in a position today to maybe not even have to use that line of credit. So in two years, if everything turns out to be okay, they don't even need it.
Right.
And PennVest will close without it.
And we don't want to jeopardize-
Right.
That loan money.
And it's, it's open until, um, twenty twenty-six, is that what it is?
Right, so what, what it is, there's, um, we, we have, uh, the engineers identified when construction is supposed to be done by, and then we add a year plus of extra time to allow for the permitting issues. And, and then it all needs to be paid at either the time that the, um, well, it, it'll be paid at the time that the permit's issued and PennVest released the funds, but we had to put an interim on that. So I forgot how many months it was off the top of my head.
And it's not like we're writing them a check tomorrow. The money remains with us unless and until they would need it.
And they would pay interest only on those funds until such point that the principal, they would pay interest only on a quarterly basis.
Just on what they draw.
Uh, just on what they draw. And then it would be all outstanding interest and principal in the lump sum balloon payment on the back end.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roma?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Next is a resolution authorized signatures for RACP, uh, corporation agreement, City of Meadville, RDA and Allegheny College.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on a cooperation agreement between the City of Meadville, the redevelopment authority of the City of Meadville and Allegheny College for the redevelopment assistance capital program.
Motion?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion?
This year, Allegheny received two million dollars in RACP money. Um, the redevelopment authority is acting as the grantee pass-through for this funding. Because the city is the host municipality, the city is being asked to sign into the cooperation agreement. The obligation of the host municipality is that you would, in the event that Allegheny, the sub-grantee, is found to be ineligible for the, some of the expenses of the project, the host city would, the host municipality would be responsible for covering that payback. However, Allegheny in this agreement has agreed to indemnify the city in that event. Uh, the city is also receiving ten thousand dollars as part of the administrative costs.
What's the project?
Andy Walker.
Andy, no.
And my colleague Amber Poya, who is the Director of Foundation and Corporate Relations. Uh, it's the adaptive reuse of Bryce Hall. So Bryce Hall is the original library on campus on the west side of North Main Street, uh, for a home of the Allegheny Lab for Innovation and Creativity, you know, related programs, um, but sort of innovation-related programming.
Any other questions?
How does that tie to the city? I mean, I was just curious when I realized it was Bryce Hall. I was like, does it, Andy, does it tie, have, what's, what's that story there?
Well, the program itself, right, is a, is funds of various number of capital projects of differing sorts across the Commonwealth. It's a very political program, right, legislators and other community organizations. The, um, Crawford County Historical Society received a grant for the Baldwin Roadhouse restoration, for example. Um, the Economic Progress Alliance for Trail, the Trail Project first phase of the Bestmar Corridor. Um, a junior high historically had received an RAC program. So those are those types of projects. Um, in this case, it's sort of, uh, restoring an historic building. Um, and then the program, a part of that attracted the Commonwealth for the programming engaging the manufacturing community and innovation, uh, program of the college through the Allegheny Lab for Innovation Creativity.
Thanks.
Jim?
No questions?
There's, there's precedent for RACP with Allegheny. There are other buildings?
Um, the Cooper Center for Communication Arts was a-
A lighting project?
The lighting on North Main Street. Um, and some, an affiliate with that was, uh, improvements at Carnegie Hall.
Roll call?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roma?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Resolution award bid and authorized signatures of City Bill and Paves Shields Asphalt Paving Incorporated?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville awarding the bid in the amount of one hundred eighty-five thousand, two hundred thirty-six dollars to Shields Asphalt Paving for bituminous milling and paving at various locations for the City of Meadville.
Motion?
Motion? I'll second.
Discussion?
The city's annual mill and pave, about nine different locations, covered under this specific contract with Shields. Uh, I will note that Shields has gotten all of the projects in the city so far this year. So Bestmar Street, if you recall, uh, council awarded the bid to Shields this project, and then your next item, which is paving of parking lots.
Roll call? I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Sorry, yeah, and this is coming out of our bar?
This is capital.
This is capital. Do we have a map? Do we know what our paving?
Uh, there is no map. I did include in my notes to council the locations of the paving this year.
Jim?
Um, no questions?
I'm lost, I'm out of my ears.
Roll call?
Uh, McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Should I look, do I want to look at that real quick before we turn our eyes?
Go ahead.
Aye.
Roma?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Resolution award bid and authorized signature paving of parking lot by Shields Asphalt Paving?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville awarding a bid in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, four hundred ninety-six dollars to Shields Asphalt Paving for bituminous milling and paving of parking lots of various locations for the City of Meadville.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
There are two city-owned parking lots for paving under this contract. One is the Academy Theater Lot, uh, the other one is the Howick Parking Lot.
Is also capital?
That's correct.
Does that mean we borrowed for this or that we've saved for this?
It's capital borrowing.
Capital borrowing.
Jim, any questions?
Nope.
Gretchen?
Nope.
Roll call?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roma?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Resolution to authorize signature of Act thirteen, at-risk bridge funds grant contract in court?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on a grant contract for the Crawford County Act thirteen at-risk bridge program for Clinton Court Bridge between the City of Meadville and Crawford County Commissioners.
Motion?
I would say move.
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, council recalls at their March fifteenth meeting, council approved submission for this grant to the county. Uh, this is actually for additional Act thirteen monies for the Clinton Court, Court Bridge Repair. Uh, the city was recipients of Act thirteen money prior. Uh, due to some unforeseen circumstances, the bridge was reevaluated by our engineer, discovered that much more work needed to be done, so we needed to resubmit to the county for additional Act thirteen funding. We did get that. We do have the match for both Act thirteen funds, um, in, in already.
In capital borrowing, or what are we using the match on?
This was some capital reserve, I think, that we had left for this.
Yes.
This is forty-eight thousand dollars additionally that we're getting for the county to finish out the-
Correct.
Capital stack for this bridge, yes. Over my this again, where, where is the bridge part of Clinton Court? Does it, is it over Mill Run?
It is.
So that's like-
It's by the Park Avenue Cinema down by the Art Green Space Park.
Gretchen?
Yep.
Roll call?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roma?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
All right, uh, public comment on non-agenda items? Who's that guy? Lee?
Yeah, hi, folks. Uh, my name is Lee Scannanero. Just wanted to invite you all to a party and members of the public as well. Uh, this Friday, May nineteenth, and Saturday, May twentieth, the Meadville Neighborhood Center is hosting a, uh, pop-up cafe with, uh, Not One More. This event is at Eden House, which is one zero zero seven Liberty Street, formerly a vacant property. I remember wanting to break into it once, but I decided not to because I'm a really good citizen. And, uh, it has been, it's being fixed up, uh, by, uh, members of Not One More. It's going to be turned into a women's recovery shelter. And, uh, this is kind of a first preview of that house that's be, that's being renovated by volunteers. And so once again, the date is Friday, this Friday, May nineteenth, from six to nine PM, where three local musicians, their names are Lasagna, So Two Z's, Optimistic Apocalypse, and Dumpster Garden will be playing in a family-friendly and free environment with three refreshments. Followed by Saturday, May twentieth, from nine AM to one PM. You can come to one zero zero seven Liberty Street, right across from Seton School, uh, for two hundred and five degrees Fahrenheit as well as tours of the property and a no-pressure space to spend any money and just relax with your neighbors. So I hope, uh, people will join us. So I hope, uh, people will join us. Thank you very much.
Lee, what was that address of the first event?
What was the what?
The first event, where is it, what's the address?
One, they are all at one zero zero seven.
Okay.
Councilmember statements, Jim?
Thank you, um, just a couple of things. Extend the city's sympathies to the family of retired firefighter Paul Ledger who passed away a few days ago. And the other one is more of a question. Aren't we coming up on Founder's Day? It's either the eighteenth or the twentieth.
Uh, we had Founder's Day already, I believe it has come.
We had, we marked Meadville's two-hundredth, this is the anniversary of being a borough or something? Not or something, that, that is what it was, it's important.
Founder's Day was, um, May twelfth.
May twelfth, okay.
We missed it.
We missed it.
There was a, a city Facebook post about it.
But that, and, and that was the, that was why the first Friday event was themed like Meadville's Friday?
Yeah.
So there was, there was some, sorry.
Uh, nothing else? Gretchen?
Well, there is a kind of, I guess, a controversial circus at the Mark, but there is a, um, circus this weekend for our creation. Controversial.
We didn't hear any controversy from, from local people.
Yeah.
Uh, just all over the country.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, thanks to Mark for putting it on, I guess. Um, uh, yeah, great, great stuff happened in, in, in Meadville. Saturday was the first, second Saturday of the season. It was a beautiful day, uh, lots of vendors, that was great. Um, so there's four more to go this season, um, best time of the year. Um, and, uh, there's so much going on. Today, there was also, there was a Special Olympics up at the Fairgrounds, I got to go for a little bit. Um, that was, oh, it was a beautiful day for that. Uh, it marked the fiftieth, um, uh, anniversary of that, which is very cool. So, so that was really nice, uh, there were a ton of people up there and that was really great to, to see. It was a beautiful atmosphere. Um, a lot of theater going on, people should see local theater. Uh, a lot of it going on this weekend. And, you guys, what's going on today?
I don't have much, I'd just like to say I'm very impressed with what, uh, how Allegheny College is working. Like we've always wanted to work together, um, to see, um, with the police, um, working together to make sure that the safety is there for our students and for the residents that live in that area, as well as the hospital. I'm, I'm very proud of the way our police have stepped up and are willing to take that extra, make it safer for us. And just with council, everything that you guys have done, I'm, I'm impressed. Tim, with the numbers, you and Jim and, and, uh, Tim Walker, you guys are just, you're doing phenomenal job and I'm, I'm very impressed. And I, I want to say thank you to you all. And just remember, school's gonna be out within thirteen to twelve days. Kids are already walking across the streets with their heads down, you know? Just be extra careful, especially up by the, uh, high, high school and middle school because they are literally walking in the streets, so just be careful. That's all I have. Motion for the meeting be adjourned?
To executive?
To executive.
To discuss personnel?
I would say move.
Second. I'll second. I want it.
Uh, roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roma?
Aye. Vogel? Aye.